All right, call order. Meeting October 8th, 6:30 please stand.
I would like to leave this typically by the United States of America. Through the Republican which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, literally in its essence.
Thank you. Call up. Mr. Jimonangelo?
Here.
Mr. Jim?
Here.
Mrs. Wolford? Mr. Scafora?
Here.
Mr. Baldeneri?
Here.
Mr. Forge?
Here.
Mayor Griffin? Present. Six present.
Madam Mayor, members of council, at the previous meeting I was directed to prepare an ordinance which I have done so. And it has three changes to our parking rates which were omitted inadvertently from the ordinance passed either last month or the month before. Those three omissions were as follows: that there would be a $50 fine levy for parking in a fire lane; secondly, that there would be a remote lot pass that would be sold for $15; and lastly, that residents of the community could obtain a discount pass, a discount of 35 percent, if they lived in the downtown area and wanted to acquire a parking pass. So with that in mind, the public hearing will be called. Where anyone who wishes to offer comment with regard to these three changes, please feel free to go to the microphone. Please state your name and address.
James Miller, 1207 East Fourth Avenue, Latrobe. The $50 fine for the parking in the fire lane, is that strictly for the shopping plaza up there, or is that all areas?
No, you're correct. It's for the Latrobe shopping plaza.
Why is it not for all fire zones?
Because I think the other five zones, I'd have to look, Mr. Miller, were already picked up. Those were fire zones on public streets. There is apparently a street that runs through the shopping mall, and we didn't pick that up earlier.
Thank you.
Nobody else wishes to offer comment? That Madam Mayor, the public hearing should now be closed.
May I have approval? Approval minutes.
Madam Mayor, I move in the minutes of the September 10th, 2012 meeting, be approved and furthered that may be allowed to remain on the-
He's a secretary's desk for everyone to see. You will have to get a second from somebody.
Who needs a second?
I will second it.
Mr. Scafora? All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carried. Approval of fiscal department reports on paid bills for September 2012 may add in the motion.
Madam Mayor, I so move.
Mr. Baldeneri, second.
I'll second it.
Mr. Jimonangelo? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed. Motion carried. Citizens' request?
My name is Paul Hoak, 121 West Tacoma Avenue, Latrobe. And the only thing that's on my mind right now, and perhaps I can receive an answer from council, my concern right now is the transfer station. I'm not sure where the status is going with that, whether it's going to be run by the city, contracted out, sold or leased out. No matter what, which way it goes, my question is, who will control the rates for this service that the citizens here certainly are privileged to have? That is, if this, if this transfer station is sold or leased out, who's going to control the rates? Are they going to change? This is my question, my concern.
It's my understanding that the lessy will control the rates.
It could either go up or down, eh?
Yes. That's my understanding. I may be wrong.
We're not certain, though, at this point. Is that-
No, at this point, no. Those details-
Okay. I would hope they wouldn't be any-
We will, we will have some oversight.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
The other thing, Paul, is they have to be commercially acceptable also because we're running on a thin margin as far as cost per ton across the scale. So they can't go too high, or people just won't come there.
Right. Well, I realize, you know, the past couple of years, it's been a very prosperous operation for the transfer station due to the fact of the storms. And I'm sure this coming year probably looks pretty decent again, as far as revenues up there. But again, even forgetting the storms and all this increased activity there, I've used the transfer station for a number of years, and I know what to expect to pay, and I would hope that whatever happens, the city would still have control on those rates. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Jim?
James Miller, 1207 East Fourth Avenue, Latrobe. I want to make a request of the council regarding the position that we now have the citizens' requests. At the present time, we can speak about what you're going to vote on, but sometimes changes are made, and I was just wondering if it's possible to have citizen comments after each item is brought up, and then council possibly at the end of the session, vote on the items that they're going to pass.
Mr. Kelly, is this fall within the Roberts rules? Is this just the way this has been done?
This is my fault. In other words, the order of our agenda is it would-
Right.
That's for council to establish. Roberts rules really doesn't have anything to do with that. I'm not sure, Mr. Miller, I mean, these items are on the agenda. What advantage would there be to not making comment at this point in time, let's say, about any one of the items on the agenda?
Well, I know in past meetings, we've, you've changed, you've made amendments to different things, okay? And at that point, you haven't given citizens the opportunity to comment on them. I just, I just thought it would be a good idea, if you're going to be talking about parking rates and you're going to approve it, you could have citizens that are concerned about this to speak after each of the items, and then at the end, after, after you're done talking about these items, then say, okay, we're going to now vote on item one, and we're going to now vote on item two. And then, of course, at that point, the citizens would have nothing to say about it. But I thought that, you know, that they could talk about it during each item instead of guessing what's going to be said or amended. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jim. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is David Smith. I'm the general manager for Republic Services, and I know there's a couple items on the agenda tonight about the bid documents and the extension. I wanted to offer up that we are here if there's any questions that arise, and we do like our relationship with the City of Latrobe, and hopefully you guys over the past 10 years enjoyed our service, and we feel we've been a good partner with you guys, and really would like to see the contract extended one more year with you guys while we work out all the details, and you guys work out some of the details of the transfer station, because that is a little bit more complex than what a normal trash bid would be. And, you know, as we stated, we would do that extension for no increase to the city. And as you guys know, in the bid, there was an increase that came with the bid, so we would be willing to extend to give you guys enough time to work out those details and not have a rushed change with vendor if there would happen to be a change in vendor. We wouldn't want to see that. We definitely want to continue to have a good partnership with the city, but just want to make sure that you guys know we're here to work with you guys and just want to be a partner with you guys. If you have any questions, we're here when that comes up on the agenda item.
David, how do you get your last name?
It's David Smith.
No, that's a tough one. If the bid proposals do go out, would you, do you feel that there's enough time to prepare a bid based on what you know now?
Based on what we know now, I think the timeframe is, is very tight to prepare a bid, especially when you're adding in the transfer station. And there was some confusion with the last bid, if you guys remember, it took a while to go through those numbers and really analyze them and make sure it was the, the right award was made. So I definitely think the timeframe is short, and more time would be better suited for the city and for the contractor who's awarded, because as you guys know, it's not just residential. It's also the commercial line of business. You guys are also talking about the roll-off line of business as well, and the transfer station. So there's an increased amount of work with the City of Latrobe that comes with some additional time that would be needed.
This, it would be a level playing field with regard to you and your competitors as to preparing a bid. I mean, you would all be given the same specs and, and the same time to do this. Do you still feel that this would be disadvantageous to you?
Not sure if I understand the question.
You all are faced, all the bidders, potential bidders are faced with the same set of criteria that we propose.
Correct. Yeah, exactly.
So you're no worse off than any other potential bidder on this?
Yeah, that is correct. Or no worse off.
That's right. If we were to table the motion to extend your contract pending the results of the bidding, would that be acceptable at this point?
So what would it be the, so if you bid it out and then it would-
Let's say, let's say we get the bids back, and there, or there's a lot of confusion among the bidders as to what exactly it is we wish to do, or wish, what we wish to have bid, and we have to do this again. At that point, let's say that's in November or December, then at that point, we make a motion to extend your contract for a year until we get these things sorted out. I don't know if it's going to get sorted out as we hope to.
Mr. Baldeneri, I'm not sure that's a fair question to Mr. Smith, but-
It may or may not be. I'm just curious.
My, my question to you, sir, is will you extend the contract for three months, January, February, and March of 2012, or do you not wish to say at this point?
I don't wish to say at this point.
Yeah, in 2013.
I mean, we've, we have, we have for the past nine months have worked with the city and extended the contract with no questions asked, or no price increases, and we really believe our, we have a strong relationship, and we believe our service has gone above and beyond. And if you check in the marketplace, we do have a reputation for great service, and we went ahead and extended that for nine months. And then when the bid openings came about, we were one of the apparent low bidders, and were the ones that did the actual bid correctly, I should say. There was some confusion because some of the other bidders, I don't think, understood the work maybe, or completed the forms correctly, and we did. And with that, we didn't ask for anything additional. We really didn't. We wanted to build that relationship, we thought our relationship was strong enough that we would be awarded that work just based on our, our work, and we were the apparent low bid. So now we got this additional transfer station work coming up, and the contract does end at the end of the year. And we wish to extend it for one more year. We really do, and we would be willing to keep that price flat, and I think that would help the city get their, their, everything in order for the transfer station and rebidding the work. And doing it, and doing, making sure it's right, and everyone, it's a win-win for the city, and, and it's a win for us to give us a little bit more time with the contract for you guys.
You've done, your company has done yeoman-like work as far as I'm concerned, and I think everybody on this council agrees, I've never ever had anybody complain about our garbage service, none whatsoever, and we're more than pleased to have entered into the contract with you in the past. Hopefully it'll occur again pending the results of the bid. You know, we're between a rock and a hard place as far as this contract goes. I don't know what the feelings of the other members of this council are at this time. Unfortunately, Alex isn't here. He's out of town, but I guess we'll have to cross that bridge when we come to it on the agenda.
We really do appreciate the-
We appreciate your being here, and, and as I said, the service that you've rendered to the city and the partnership that you, we've been involved with, it's been nothing but, but good, so.
Thank you.
Any other? Committee reports. Marty?
Marty, I'm the chair of the Latrobe Department Authority. Last week, Joe Bush, Alex Giannini, our code officer, Ian, Carl, Skip Ballinger, myself, representatives from Carl Walker, representatives from K&amp;K Plumbing, and from Masham, the Elevator Company. We did a walk-through, and there were some things that needed replacing, repaired, and I was in there over the weekend, and they did most of the repairs. There was some welding that needed done, and they fixed all those items. K&amp;K Plumbing, we're deferred payment. There's some water issues on the third, second level where the water drains down, it's ponding something terrible, so we've got to do something about that, some kind of a test. In terms of the elevator, it'll be in the ninth, which is tomorrow. We'll start delivering it, and it's going to take approximately five weeks to install. So we're looking somewhere around, what, end of November probably, if everything goes well with them. So that's being taken care of. As far as the water issue, we're looking into, we're probably going to put the hoses on from the fire department and have it run down there and see what the problem is, because the drain evidently is just, it, once it gets there, it's handling most of it, but we don't want it to, winter time, it'd be frozen and then go elsewhere. So we're going to definitely look into that situation. What else is there? So many things going on over there. I think overall, they've done a very commendable job in the garage itself. It's very clean. We have the cleaning company back in taking care of things. Twice a year, we're going to have the fire department come in and hose it down like we've done in the past. So I think all those things will be taken care of. Skip, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, the only other issue with the lighting in there, they're checking out to see if there's enough lighting during the day, daytime, because the way it was set up, the middle lights are supposed to be on during the day, and right now they're not. There's only lights on in the basement. And they're going to do a study, see if there's enough lights in there, and after that, it'll be taken care of.
We'll be paying as soon as Joe Bush and Alex give us the okay. Carl Walker will be paying the remainder of their bill, which is approximately $260-some-thousand. K&amp;K Plumbing, we deferred payment until they remedied the problem we have with the drainage. The electric, we're paying because there's, we have no problem with the electric. Of course, we're holding it until they fix the lighting like it's supposed to be. So those couple items, we're holding off paying until they fix the problems we have. So it's council. If anyone have any other questions?
How many cars have been using the garage each day?
I understand somewhere around 100. It depends, sometimes it can go higher, but on average, I understand it's around 100. It's been very light. Even the lots around town, the parking's been very light, so I don't know if it's just this time of year or what, but.
Do you have any report on your income or revenue for the first nine months?
Not yet.
You have it for eight months, or?
The computer system that I have has had a problem, it's been looked at, it's sort of, I had to go back and redo a lot of things because somehow something happened to it. It got, what do they call it?
Do you know, do you know what your revenue has been for the-
Yeah, it's been-
How much?
I don't know yet, Mr. Jim. We're, we're checking in all these things. My computer system went down, and I don't know where it is right now. I have the new reports, and I haven't had a chance to get them into the system yet until I get it fixed. I know fines are down.
Marty, how did you, did the project work out against the budget that we had?
We have $200, $200-some-thousand remaining.
Thank you.
Skip, is it $230? $230?
Somewhere around $220, $230.
Around $230,000 remaining. And we're really looking in more to a camera system, particularly maybe the elevator, and then whether we want to keep meters or do the arm, you know, where you pull a ticket on itself. But there's, that's approximately $230,000 left. But we still have this grant we're working on, and there are some people ran into, what's the lady's name, Senator?
Kim Ward.
Kim Ward, and she's saying probably 80% go. So we'll see what happens with that grant.
Thanks, Marty.
Thank you.
Charlie, is Charlie here? State border authority reports? Okay. Jim here? John?
I don't have any.
Ian? Joe? Okay. Dylan?
Madam Mayor, members of council, the first department is Public Works Department. The first item is a motion, and it reads, "I move we authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Allied Waste to extend the residential waste and recycling and commercial waste contract through December 31, 2013 pursuant to the letter proposal attached here too." Also, I'm not certain if it got into your packet, there is an email that says that Allied would be willing to hold the price for the full year, hold the current pricing. One thing I want to make sure council understands, if, if we do pass this motion and extend it for a full year, that means, once we let our bids out, anyone who would be the low bidder could not start until December 31st, 2013, and that could have an impact on the bid.
Do we have a motion? Make a motion?
Madam Mayor, I so move.
Mr. Baldeneri, second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Scafora? Any questions or discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, now the motion is, I presume, to accept the offer through Republic Services, is that correct? And extend the contract?
That's correct.
That is your motion?
That's the motion, that's what's on the table.
That is the motion. The motion would be to extend the contract through December 2013, which would mean December 31st, 2013.
And if we accept this motion, that means we can't put off a bid to transfer station or anything else?
We can put it off a bid to-
Next year.
No one else can start a new contract with us until the expiration of this contract.
Okay, January 2013, or 14. Okay, any other discussion?
Let's look at this. What advantages would this have? What would, how advantageous would this be to the city if we were to extend the contract for a year? Our rates wouldn't go up. We'd continue receiving the same services, and perhaps we could table the motion to rebid the residential solid waste and commercial business. We can set that back until early next year and perhaps take a look at this, with the, you know, look at it in greater detail, make sure that we've done our due diligence with regard to the, to the proposals that were set out.
Unfortunately, Alex isn't here, but is, I believe that's been worked on with the garbage committee. I guess they can answer that for him.
I know last month Alex was much poorer going with this bid, 70 and 10.
Oh, yeah, I, yeah, and I have been, have been leaning that way myself.
I kind of thought we all hit the numbers, kind of thought the transfer station really wasn't making us the money we thought it was. So where are we digging into to run that transfer station?
For another year. You're right.
Right. So like, what are we going to tell the people, they try to, we're throwing money into something that's bad and he's leaving us money? Is that what you're saying?
I'm not saying that, but that's, I asked what the advantages were. That obviously is not advantageous to us. It's a, it's a, it's a disadvantage. That's all I'm asking. I, you know, where do we stand with regard to this?
Any else?
I'm going to ask the committee, the diligence and the, for the bid contract, you have been working on that, or have you not, you guys have a lot of that work done already?
The specification, as far as I know right now, is ready. Michelle Nestor has it prepared. I think that we're confusing the potential extension to Republic with the contract that has been prepared and the specifications. The, if Allied, excuse me, Republic, doesn't want to, want to perform any services for us after December 31st, then they have a right to refuse. But I think at that point, we would be in an emergency situation. However, we could, we could essentially, and Mr. Slistner, please listen to this. I can see he's thinking, but he's always thinking. At any rate, we could write into these specifications that the residential and the recycling could be started at the immediate request of the city, so that, so that essentially the one that would be the successful bidder could be asked to start the pickup of the recycling and the garbage before, before they would actually get into the transfer station, and that could be written into the specification. I'm positive of this, Mr. Kelly.
Are you saying, Mr. Jim, the current specifications?
I am.
That they could begin collecting prior to December of 2013?
No, no.
No, please listen. I'm trying to stop. What I'm saying is that if there is a difficulty for the city in obtaining the pickup of the garbage and the recycling prior to the time that this new contract would go into full effect on April 1st, 2013, we could write that into the specifications, we could request that part of it prior to April 1st, 2013. And I think that would solve the problem. Now, if Republic wants to take it for three months, from January 1st, 2013, through March, yeah, 2013, they can.
Mr. Smith, I'd like to address you with regard to this. If your biggest concern is the timeframe to prepare this bid and to do it properly, then could- then couldn't we move back the bid acceptance date? If you were to offer us a three-month extension, that would give us plenty of time, or give you plenty of time to prepare this bid with more, with greater accuracy. And at the same time, it would also allow us to get bids that are perhaps more favorable to us, more favorable to you, to whomever. So, would an additional three months, if you were to extend your contract another three months, allow you to prepare this bid in the manner that you would deem necessary?
Mr. Baldieri, I hear what you're saying. But look, if they can't figure out what to bid in sixty days, we don't have to open a bid till, let's say, February 28 or something, some such number. That's four months for them to look at it. But the contract should start on April 1.
That's what I'm saying.
Is that what you're saying?
If we were to extend the contract for three months and if we were to move the bid end date further into the future, let's say January 31.
Correct.
That would allow you enough time.
We wouldn't receive bids.
Allow bidders enough time to...
We wouldn't receive bids till January 31 of 2013.
I don't see nobody else here saying they have a problem. You've got a lot of followers out there and they knew about it. Nobody else has nothing about it. I don't see nobody here complaining about it.
Yeah, but then again, Fig, we haven't received, these bid proposals haven't gone out yet. And once they go out, you know, and you're looking at the bid proposals and you're saying, whoa, this is going to take a lot more work than what our original bid. And obviously, it is going to. I mean, we've pulled, we've thrown a whole nother...
Like I said, Michelle, that's...
Yeah, I'm not quelling with the hard facts. I don't...
Well, we, you know, how I see it, and you know, I'm not, I mean, we're going to keep the price the same for a year. I know you have some issues with the transfer station, but with it, and I'm not sure of the detail and then how that work. You also got to remember, when you start dealing with a transfer station and other companies taking over a transfer station, there are, you know, evaluations of that transfer station. Does it meet OSHA requirements? Does it meet certain other operating requirements? Or does it meet certain standards? Is there going to be additional work that needs to be done for that infrastructure to be, to handle it? There are a lot of different things that go into, than just a normal bid of picking up trash. There is a different aspect to that. So, you know, where the prices of fuel are at, I don't know where you guys have seen, but it's pushing four bucks a gallon for diesel. And we're offering a year with those rates and where you guys can actually sit down and try to figure out an analysis of that transfer station. And I think we've helped you guys and had different agreements on the roll-off. If you guys need assistance in the meantime to handle roll-off services, we have worked out those agreements as well with hall rates and good disposal rates for the city of Latrobe.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
We have a motion, we have a motion and second, Madam Mayor. And it's a motion, not a resolution, so it can be...
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. All right, I want to have a vote on this. Could we do hands? Motion to accept, Amina. To accept the offer. Reject. Five one, thank you. Mindless, no.
Okay, the second item under the Public Works Department is also a motion. And it would be... It would read, "I move we authorize the city manager to rebid specifications for a five-year contract with a five-year renewal option for residential waste and recycling, and natural waste, transfer station roll-off, and over the scale public operation." That is a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second that motion, Madam Mayor.
Questions or discussion? All right, all in favor? opposed? Okay, Carrie, thank you.
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, the third item under the Public Works Department is a resolution. And it approves a change order. It's Resolution 2012 Blank Approving Change Order to Contract to 2012 with Tresco Paving Corp. For the 2012 Community Development Block Grant Paving Program. Whereas pursuant to Resolution 2012-40, the city awarded a contract to Tresco Paving Corp. For the 2012 Community Development Block Grant Street Paving Project. And contract amount not to exceed $112,005.50. Whereas the city now desires to approve a change order number one to set contract, now therefore be resolved, section one. That the change order number one dated September 24, 2012, to the CDBG Paving Program, contract number two slash 2012 with Tresco Paving Corporation, resulting in a total increase in contract payment of $13,891.98, being the same as hereby approved. A copy of the change order number one is attached as Exhibit A. Section two, the mayor, city manager, city secretary, and any other proper city officer are hereby authorized and directed to take any and all action and to sign any and all documents necessary to carry into effect this resolution and change order number one resolved in council of this date. It's my understanding, speaking with Mr. Bush and the city manager, that the actual net increase to the city is approximately $1,000 on this change order. We had saved roughly $10,000 on the previous paving program. And there was an increase in the allocation by CDBG of approximately $4,000 to the city. So, we're really in effect spending about $1,000 more on the change order, not $13,000. That's the end. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the Solicitor.
Mr. Solicitor, do you have Exhibit A?
Yes, I do. It shows a, just what it shows basically, the bottom line is a total increase of $13,891.98 on the change order, on change order number one. If you want to know what it's for, you have to ask Mr. Bush. I think he might be more familiar than I would be.
Kelly, can you, what was the change order over, Joe?
The change order was over the continuing of Watkins Avenue and doing an intersection.
Extended the paving out for a bit.
Yes.
May I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I say move.
Baldieri, second please.
I'll second.
Mr. Scopora, any questions or discussions now?
This is Resolution 2012-51. Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mr. Baldieri?
Yes.
Mr. Scopora?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Jim Inangelo?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Vote six, yes.
Motion, Carrie, thank you.
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, we are now in the Police Department. The first item is a resolution and it's entitled, "Accepting a Grant From the District Attorney's Investigative Fund For The Purchase Of A K-9 Police Vehicle." Whereas the drug investigation by Westmoreland County District Attorney's Office has resulted in the seizure of United States currency. Whereas certain sums of money seized from drug traffickers has been forfeited to the Westmoreland County District Attorney's Investigative Fund Number Two. Whereas the Westmoreland County District Attorney intends to distribute $5,000 to the city for the purpose of enforcing the provisions of the Controlled Substance Drug Device and Cosmetic Act, and in particular for the purchase of a vehicle to be equipped for K-9 certified in drug detection. If the city of Latrobe agrees to the following conditions. Number one, the city hereby agrees to establish a separate account into which the money will be deposited. Two, the city agrees to maintain an accurate record of all money expended so that an annual audit may be conducted. Three, the city hereby agrees to expend sums only for the enforcement of the Controlled Substance Drug Device and Cosmetic Act. And lastly, the city hereby agrees to provide an audit of disbursements of the account on a yearly basis if requested, now therefore be resolved. Section one, that the city of Latrobe agrees to accept the sum of $5,000 from the Westmoreland County District Attorney's Office. Section two, the city agrees to accept the sum complying with the above stated conditions and utilizing the sums for enforcement of the Controlled Substance Drug Device and Cosmetic Act, in particular for the purchase of a vehicle to be equipped for K-9 certified in drug detection. Section three, that the mayor, city manager, city secretary, and any other proper officer be and are hereby authorized and directed to take any and all action, sign any and all documents necessary to carry into effect this resolution resolved in council of this date. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the Solicitor.
May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Inangelo, second please.
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Forish?
Any questions or discussion?
This is Resolution 2012-52. Mr. Jim Inangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mr. Scopora?
Yes.
Mr. Baldieri?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Vote six, yes.
Motion, Carrie, thanks.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Kelly, excuse me, we have the abridged edition of the resolutions, please.
The abridged resolution. The next resolution in a bridge four is entitled, "Establishing A Handicapped Disabled Veteran Van Accessible Parking Space On Washington Street." And the resolution establishes such a parking space on the southerly side of Washington Street in front of packed property owned by Kathy Anne Fennell located at 107 Washington Street. Should she no longer reside there, then the handicap space would cease and terminate. And section two asks a request that officers of the city take all steps necessary and place all proper signage, resolve in council of this date.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
You're welcome, Mr. Baldieri.
May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Scopora, second?
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Baldieri, any questions?
I do have a question. We, Mr. Bush and, this isn't any issue with this permit?
Mr. Kelly, does she know that even though that handicap spot's gone there, that's not for her as long as other people down there are handicapped, they could park in that spot?
I can't tell you what she knows or doesn't know, but you are correct. It is a handicap parking spot.
Okay, I just hope she knows that, you know what I mean?
Any other question? Sasha? Okay.
This is Resolution 2012-53. Mr. Jim Inangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Baldieri?
Yes.
Mr. Scopora?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Vote six, yes.
Motion, Carrie, thank you.
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, we have a second request for a handicapped disabled veteran van accessible parking space on River Avenue. And this one is located at 112 River Avenue, 212 River Avenue. I am corrected that the applicant, which is the St. Joseph's Social Club, is requesting two handicap parking spaces to be located in front of 112 River Avenue. Other than that, it is the same resolution as previously read. Except as corrected to two.
May I have a motion?
So, move, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Baldieri, second?
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Forish, any questions or discussion?
Again, Mr. Bush, any issues with these permits, permits for these two spaces?
No, actually, they're going to join a couple that is already there. They had obtained some more property further down and want to get some closer parking for their handicap.
Thank you.
Any others?
This is Resolution 2012-54. Mr. Baldieri?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Scopora?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mr. Jim Inangelo?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Vote six, yes.
I'll be with you more often, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, Members of...
Should we proceed?
She didn't say that.
Let us proceed.
Okay. We can, Mr. Deputy Mayor, you're in charge until she returns. The next item is a resolution approving Hoffman's Boarding Kennels contract. We've been provided with a contract by Hoffman's Boarding Kennels. The amount is $250 per year and $55 for emergency calls, which is the same as it was the last time. The motion would be to adopt the resolution approving Hoffman's Boarding Kennels contract.
$250 per year?
I'm sorry, I said per year, it's per month.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Jim Inangelo.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Mr. Jim? Any discussion?
This is Resolution 2012-55. Mr. Scopora?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Baldieri?
Yes.
Mr. Jim Inangelo?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Vote six, yes.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, the last item under the Police Department is a simple motion. The motion would read, "I move we authorize the Solicitor to prepare and advertise an ordinance to ban smoking and skateboarding in the downtown parking garage."
I have a question on the motion.
Yes.
Do you have to be smoking and skateboarding to be banned?
No, I think it would be settled to ban either individually. But if you were really going together, you would really be banned.
So moved.
Mr. Scopora, second? Mr. Baldieri, any more questions or discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, Carrie?
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, next item is a simple motion. And it reads, "I move that council consider redefining and resetting parking fines for various violations."
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make that motion. And my motion essentially is this, that the fine for over-parking at a mere be $3 if paid within the first business day. If not paid within the first business day but paid thereafter within the third business day, it'd be $5. And if not paid within the third business day, that the fine then be increased to $5 plus cost. That's my motion. It's three, five, and then five plus cost.
Well, actually, it's not the motion. The motion is to ask council to reconsider. Once that motion is made... Once that motion is made, you understand what Mr. Jim is seeking, then you could make the motion for those specifics. But right now, that motion is asking council to reconsider the changes.
It's a motion to reconsider?
Mm-hmm. That's my understanding, to consider redefining and resetting.
May I have a motion?
Get past that hurdle before we go to the specifics.
I second the motion.
All right, Mr. Baldeneri. Any questions or discussion?
Yes. I'd like to amend Richard's suggestion.
Is this just a motion to reset him?
It's just a motion.
This is a motion to...
This is a motion just to...
Apparently, Mr. Kelly stated that this is just a motion to consider my motion.
This is the first step. The first step is asking council, do you want to reconsider what you did?
Yes.
Okay, that motion is on the floor. If council votes the motion down, we don't talk about any other fines. If council says no, we'll reconsider, then we would put the specifics out for a vote.
So this vote is just on whether we're going to reconsider?
Correct.
Okay, then we're not resetting or...
Not tonight.
Not tonight?
No, not in this voting.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now you're reconsidering. Now you can bring up specifics.
Nobody opposed.
Nobody opposed. He's just started.
Well, you heard Richard's proposal, my proposal, after giving some thought to what I had proposed at the previous meeting, I'd like to change the fines to $5 for a parking violation either on street or off street irrespective of the meter, half hour, two hour, or nine hour meter. I would like it to be $5 first 24 hours, goes to $10 after 24 hours, and $30 after 72 hours.
How much after 72?
$30.
All right, so the lineup here is, my lineup is three, five, and plus cost, and yours is five, 10, and 30.
Can you specify business days?
Yes, I did change it from hourly to a business day because that would eliminate Saturday and Sunday, but it would also eliminate a problem. Because if you get a ticket at 1 o'clock on a Friday, you can't really pay it off until Monday is. So let's say you get one on Thursday at 1 o'clock and try to pay it off on Friday at 2:30, you're late. You see what I mean? That's 24 hours if you use the 24-hour method. So I changed the amount of the fine and also when they would be effective. And of course, Saturday and Sundays are not business day, and I don't think Columbus is a business day. So theoretically, you could have gotten a ticket on Friday and paid it tomorrow.
It's supposed to be a holiday day.
How many holidays do you have in a year that our offices close?
How many?
Once a month?
Well, I think it's, I think it's 11. There's two in the... There's a few months that there is. It's less than a calendar year.
Okay, let's clarify because I think we need to do that. Mr. Jim made the original motion, and correct me if I'm wrong, that up to the end of the first business day, following the date of receiving the citation, you would pay $3. After the first business day, following the date of receiving the citation, one would then pay $5 up to including the third business day. After the third business day from receiving the citation, one would then pay $5 plus cost, I'm not sure.
That's what I said. I said cost. That would, the amount of the cost would have to be developed if the solicitor would become involved or we have to take it to court, then there's going to be extra time. But I think that the amounts are reasonable.
But before we get, did somebody second that motion? That's my next question.
Does he have any kind of questions?
Yeah, let's have, the motion was made, has there been a second to that motion?
Well, there was the motion to reconsider the...
That passed already. We're now on Mr. Jim's specifics of how he wants to amend the fines.
There was no second to that.
But before we get to Mr. Baldeneri's amendment, who seconded the motion? Mr. Jim?
Yes, we can't discuss it until it's seconded.
Correct, we can't discuss any amendment.
I'll second Mr. Jim's motion so we can have discussion.
Okay, awesome. Now, we just made the motions. Mr. Baldeneri, I believe, is amending that motion. And let me see if I'm clear. The fine would be $5 for the first 24 hours?
Well, I, like Richard's idea, the next, within one business day.
Okay, within one business day. It would be $10 within three business days, after three business days, it would run to 30. Okay. Now, that's his amendment, is there a second to his amendment?
I'll second that.
Now, we have discussion first on the amendment, and then a vote, and then that will determine whether Mr. Jim's motion is amended or not.
So we're voting on Mr. Baldeneri's?
They're, Mr. Voting on Mr. Baldeneri's amendment to that motion, to Mr. Jim's motion.
Okay, all in favor of Mr. Baldeneri's amendment?
Aye.
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 May I have your?
Well, that, Mr. Jim's motion has been amended, so we are now in effect voting on Mr. Baldeneri's motion.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure.
Well, I thought there were four.
Now, you said we would have to vote on Ken's first.
Correct. But if I understand, if you want to have, let's have a show of hands, they will know. How many yeses? One, two?
Yes for Baldeneri's.
This is for, oh, you remember that?
What you want to vote? We're talking to this.
Mr. Baldeneri's motion, his amendment, how many voted for?
Aye.
One, two, three. Three noes?
Aye.
Motion was defeated. Now we're back to Mr. Jim's motion.
Before we vote on it, and I thank you for seconding the motion, but I think I've said this before, but I've never heard so many complaints from people about the resetting those parking fines, as I did this. And that's in all the years I've been on council. I've heard it from the doctors, as I said, I've heard it when I've gone to Greysburg, I've heard it, I've heard it from people that work here in the city, merchants, the bankers. There's no one, I don't, maybe they're just trying to fortify my idea, but like I said before, I've never heard so much opposition to anything that we've ever done. And I think that if you vote for the way I set it up or by motion, let's give it a chance and try to catch the scoff laws. Those are the people that really, I think, we're trying to deter from just taking, not putting any money in the meters, and we can find them, you know, whom they are, and go from there. And then, if within three months or six months, that system isn't successful, and you want to go to the higher parking fines, all right, we can reconsider. So I'm just asking that you delay. Now, one of the gentlemen that helped set these fines works for an establishment that has free parking. You know, you go up to that establishment and you can have free parking because they have parking spaces. So actually, aren't we benefiting those places that have free parking? And I think the answer is yes. So, and that's why I wanted to reset these fines, if only temporarily, perhaps for six months. But then let's chase down the scoff laws, the people that do this every day and don't put money in the meter. That's my plea.
My question to you, Mr. Jim, and maybe the parking authority could represent, could help. What is the cost to park all day at a nine hour meter?
They raised the rate.
Under the new rates, the new rates.
It's a quarter an hour, I understand now. So it's, you're looking at what, $4.25?
$4.25. So if you don't pay it, you're going to pay a $3 fine. I'm going to pay the $3 fine every day. I'm never going to put a quarter in a meter.
You're one of those people I talked about, the scoff law, you know? And those are the ones we should be targeting.
But how do you target them? And you're going to fine them $3, and they're going to pay the $3 fine.
No, no, you're not going to fine them $3. If they're there, if they're parking on a two hour zone, you fine them again. You're going to fine them twice the same.
I call a nine hour meter. I asked them for a nine hour meter. What's the rate to park at a nine hour meter?
Well, right now, I think it's...
New rates are quarter an hour.
Uh, nine hour meter, $2.25.
The new rate is a quarter an hour.
Eight hours a day, $2. Nine hours would be $2.
$2.25.
That's right.
They're going to pay you $3.
They're going to pay you $3 a chance, if that's what I'm saying.
I don't, I don't think so, Mike. I do, with all due respect, Richard. There has to be an incentive for them to pay the meter, and that incentive is the fine. Now, you can respond to all the people that complain to you about the increase in the fines, and you respond to them the way I have. Pay the meter, you won't get a ticket. It's that simple. What about the people that... What about the...
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Madam Mayor, what, I'm talking about people that don't intend to violate the rule or don't intend not to pay, but they just happen to be held over for one rate or another, perhaps they don't even have a quarter when they get there. What are we going to do for them? Are we going to, as Mr. Baldeneri is, you know, you're penalizing them. Mike, you, your factory has parking for your individuals.
That we pay taxes on every...
I'm not blaming you for that, but I mean, they do have parking. Rite Aid has parking. There's other places that have free parking. I'm going to ask this question.
It's not free.
It's not free, but it's charged into the cost. So what could we do is raise taxes so that we can charge it to, then we won't have to collect money for the parking or the parking fines? But let me ask, I think I see Marty there. Marty has, works at a business that has free parking. What do you do to people that don't park, that don't, that park in your spot and then leave and go shopping someplace else?
That's Rite Aid's, Rite Aid does nothing.
You don't fine them?
No. It's not the policy of the company. There could be a customer, and they're not willing to fine people. We have people that blatantly abuse parking over there. And we could even pass a motion to have those people fined if we wanted to, and Rite Aid would go on with it. I'm looking here at this yellow nine hour meters. One quarter gets the parker 90 minutes of parking. Now, this is the, I'm sure this is the resolution that was passed. Orange two hour meters, it's 60 minutes for a quarter. So I'm confused now on what was really passed, because this sheet's telling me nine hours of meters and 90 minutes for a quarter.
Are you sure?
That's the old rates.
The current.
Yeah, current, yeah, the current rates. Those are the current rates.
Am I looking at the wrong one here?
No, we need to have an incentive for the people to actually pay the parking meters. Our enforcement isn't that strong. We don't have the personnel to do consistent enforcement, eight hours a day, five days a week. We don't have the personnel for that. But with the threat...
Plus, we spent a lot of money on a study that tells us that five and 10 is not out of the realm.
Yeah, because, you know, over the years, we've tied these guys' hands. They're letting them raise rates and stuff like that. This council, council, four years ago, four years after that, or four years before, every time they come here for an increase, we would never get an increase. We would know, we'd move for these people. And then you didn't have the money to fix the law, and then out there's a $3.5 million loan to pay, it's going to be tight. And if they did a study and everything else, we paid for it professionally. People were telling us this, when do we leave these people?
And I stand corrected, nine hours is two and a quarter.
And a ticket's $5. No, a ticket's $3. It's current, that's the current. I don't think so. I don't think it's a quarter an hour.
I just put a quarter in, and I got an hour.
In the nine years?
At the nine hour meter?
No.
No, you didn't, you got more than an hour as a nine hour meter, the current rate.
Oh, no, whatever meter, I didn't remember what meter it was. I put a quarter in, and I got an hour. If you feed the meter, you don't get a ticket.
Actually, Richard, they got two days to get down here and pay that fine, you know, $3. It's up to them to get down here.
Five, yeah, even in $5, you know, you've got, you've got a next day. You can do it then.
That's how I feel, you know? You know, $3 a day is like, wow. But when do I take responsibility for myself? And if it goes to $3, it's my fault. It's not, you know, Richard's or Candy's or anybody up there. It's their fault.
And I think we're forgetting that we have a system, it's called Pango, use your phone, you pay for it. Not everybody has it, but many people do, and anybody can do it.
Many people do, but a lot of people don't want to.
Yeah, not everybody has it.
I understand that.
But we still got three days before it's $30 to get here and pay it.
Could you stay his motion?
The motion that Mr. Jim proposed, which is what we're voting on, is that the person would have to pay a fine of $3 if paid within the first business day after the date of issuance of the citation. If you issue it Thursday, you've got till the end of Friday to pay it at $3. It would be $5 if paid by the end of the third day. So again, if the ticket were issued on a Thursday, you'd have Friday, Monday, and Tuesday. I don't want to count those as business days. I don't know how you'd go about Saturday after. If it is paid after Tuesday, for example, after the third business day, then it would be still the same $5 fine, but any cost. So there's really, if they pay it afterwards and it doesn't have to go, as Mr. Jim said, to collection through the magistrate, it's still going to be $5.
Basically, they had to get up here and pay their fine before it goes to magistrate, because it doesn't matter which way it gets to the magistrate, you're paying the cost anyway.
You'll pay the cost, right. You'll pay the cost anyway.
Or, how many times have we had to go after people for fines?
Did we send the citation?
Right.
Well, what was done?
I'm thinking about 2010, something like that.
Kay just, she came back, it, oh, I wish Jimmy was here, because he got to sign all of them, but it was, it was a stack of them. Maybe, maybe 30 per month? I mean, just ballpark, I didn't count.
From Kay? Now, from Kay. Okay. Is this a...
This is a simple motion. And show of hands.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Oh, I'm sorry.
For Richard's, the Richard's. Three, four, five.
Three, motion fails.
Who was the, who was the other yes?
She just said.
Who was the other yes?
Opposed.
Didn't she just say?
No, I just said first. I was telling how many, it was four. How many were four?
One, two, I saw.
Three, no, three, three.
I didn't see.
If one person abstains, it passes.
Opposed, motion opposed, show of hands. Three.
Motion's received.
Madam Mayor, may I make a suggestion? If we're going to stick people with $30, and $10, and $5, there has to be some way of looking at a ticket that's received by the police department, saying whether or not were justified, or whether it was an accident, or whether it was unavoidable. I'm not, I'm just suggesting that there should be some way that these tickets can be mediated, or amnesty granted, or something. I'm sorry we didn't get the other, I'm going to bring it up again, by the way, but anyway, I'm sorry we didn't get it, but there has to be some way of looking at the tickets and not having the people saying, well, he's fixing tickets, or the manager fixed a ticket. I don't like that term. I just think there has to be some sort of a...
You're going to kind of leniency, that's exactly what you're going to get.
Marty.
You gotta deter these people from not slugging the meter, slug the meter. Slug the meter, and you won't get the fine.
Marty, can you guys support 5, 10, 15 magistrate? Would that...
Well, we'd have to, you know, bring up a meeting.
Could you do that, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
You're talking $5 the first business day, $10?
Yeah, 15 the third day, and you don't have any third day, it's going to magistrate.
Business day, Mr. Jim, let's go. Business day, it sounds better.
Yeah, I like who has...
It sounds better.
Fair enough.
We have a meeting on the...
It's good, yeah. Okay.
Madam Mayor, members of council, we are now on what was labeled as the first item, but became the second item under Administration of Finance, and that is the ordinance for which we had the public hearing. The caption reads, "Amending Chapter 256 of the Code of Ordinances, Vehicles and Traffic Section 25658 Schedule Roman numeral 12, Permit Parking Rates and Schedule 25669 Schedule 13 Fines." In essence, the amendments are three-folded one. It adds as item 6A under the previous ordinance, regular permit parking pass unreserved at remote lots $15 per month. It adds as item 14, a city resident discount of 35% for any permit pass excluding downtown resident pass, $15, memorial drive pass of $25, and passes of remote lots reserved drawn to reserve. To be eligible for a resident discount pass, customers must provide proof of address and vehicle registration, must be current on payment of city real estate and/or earned income taxes and sanitation bill. The third change is a $50 parking fine for fire lane violation at the Lincoln Road Shopping Center. The proper action would be to enact the ordinance as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
Baldener, second.
I'll second.
Mr. Scapora, any questions or discussions?
Yeah.
Okay. Barb? This is ordinance 2012-11. Mr. Jim?
No.
Mr. Jim and Angela?
Yes.
Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mr. Scapora?
Yes.
Mr. Baldener?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Thirty-five yes, one. Motion carries.
I'd like to make a remark on that. You know, you've got a fire lane there, and we're always saying about, we don't want to charge somebody extra for, you know, money and stuff like that. And that person parks in that fire lane, he or she knows that's a fire lane, and they're basically saying they don't care, they're parked in there. And it's the same with your rates here. They know what the fines are and stuff like that, basically what they're saying, they don't care.
Madam Mayor, members of council, one more item under unfinished business, and it is a resolution appointing Donald Albert as a member of the Luttrell Civil Service Commission to fill the under-expired term of Marshal in Savage. Said term will expire January 31, 2015. Motion would be to adopt that resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, second please.
I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Forish, any questions or discussion? Okay, Barb? This is Resolution 2012-56. Mr. Forish?
Yes.
Mr. Scapora?
Yes.
Mr. Baldener?
Yes.
Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Mr. Jim and Angela?
Yes.
Mayor Griffin?
Yes.
Thirty-six yes. Thank you. Thank you, Dawn. Dawn. Dawn?
Madam Mayor, just for point of information, a question was raised, and so Mr. Albert knows this. He also serves on the Planning Commission, and the question was asked, did that create any conflict or incompatibility? And the answer is no. He can serve on both bodies. That's it for the agenda items, Madam Mayor. Well, action items.
New business? New business? Mr. Kelly?
Madam Mayor, this isn't new business, it's old business. It's one of my favorite subjects, that's the crosswalks in this town. I understand there's been a meeting, has been set on October 18th, right, Mr. Kelly?
I'm not 100 percent sure.
Yeah, I'll be out of town, of course, so I won't be able to attend it.
It's not my meeting.
Oh, it isn't, but there is a meeting with the city manager, and I don't know if he's with council or not. But anyways, as far as the crosswalks go, I guess we're going to make some headway.
We are.
Hopeful. Any other thing, any other thing under the business? Okay, city manager's not here right now. For mayor's report, I just want to thank Dawn again, and that's all I have. I have a motion for adjournment?
I'm going to wait until he comes here.
I was going to do, but Ron Wymer's not here, I wanted to wait till he's here present, so, okay?
I move, we adjourn.
Uh, second please? For adjournment? Should we do that? All in favor? Three. Okay, all in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries, thanks, Barb.
I'd like everybody to note that Barbara Buck was a county employee one time.